Good evening, everyone. We'll start our ordinary council meeting today. Start with the acknowledgement. We, the Greater Shepparton City Council, begin today's meeting by acknowledging the traditional owners of the land, which now comprises Greater Shepparton. We pay respect to their tribal elders, we celebrate their continuing culture, and we acknowledge the memory of their ancestors. Item number two on the agenda is Privacy Notice. I'll read this one. This public meeting is being streamed live via our Facebook page and made available for public access on our website, along with the official minutes of this meeting. All care is taken to maintain your privacy. However, as a visitor in the public gallery, it is assumed that your consent is given in the event that your image is broadcast to the public. It is also assumed that your consent is given to the use and disclosure of any information that you share at the meeting, including personal or sensitive information to any person who accesses those recordings or minutes. Item three, apologies, none today. Item four is Declaration of Conflict of Interest. Councillors, is there any declaration of conflict of interest today with respect to the agenda? No. We'll move on to item number five, Confirmation of Minutes of Previous Meetings. Are there any points of the last meeting's minutes that you oppose? No? Okay, so there's a recommendation on page one.
I'm happy to move the recommendation, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, and do I have a second?
Second motion, Madam Mayor.
And we'll go to the vote, all in favour. Motion carried, unopposed. Thank you. Item six is Public Question Time.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, we have one question tonight from William Elbon, Mr Elbon's in the gallery tonight. So, Mr Elbon's question is, given that council officers recently met with the Victorian Police Sixth Industry Coordination Unit, and that the council officers were extensively briefed as to the magnitude of illegal brothel activity in Shepparton and surrounds, can the community soon expect a halt to this massive abuse of council planning law? And that this new and welcomed approach by council to actively work with police in investigative terms might mean an end to the problem of illegal brothels and anything else you wish to include in answering this question? The response is, as complaints for legal brothel activity are reported to council, council compliance officers will continue to investigate matters and take necessary enforcement actions in accordance with our statutory obligations. These investigations will be undertaken in conjunction with Victorian Police as required. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now move on to item number seven.
There's no provision for that?
No, Mr Elbon, there is no provision for that, and... Yeah. So, could you please, if you want to stay in the gallery, please do so, but please do not interrupt the proceedings of this meeting. This is the official, this is the protocol of ordinary council meeting. We do not take any comments from the gallery, so could you please stay there and be an observant, but you would not be able to speak during the proceedings. I'll now move on to item number 7.1, Petition. Councillors, on item, on page number two, there's a recommendation about the petition objecting to the proposal to Florida Tatura Public Water.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, I'm...
Would a councillor like to move a motion?
I'll move the recommendation as printed on page two of the agenda.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Councillor Jovanati? Thank you. So, Councillor Hazelman, would you like to speak to the motion?
No, Madam Mayor.
Councillor Jovanati, would you like to speak to the motion?
Now, straightforward, Madam Mayor.
Would any councillor like to speak against the motion? Would any councillor like to speak for the motion? No. Okay, we'll now go to the vote, those in favour? All in favour, sorry I didn't hear you, Councillor Dennis Patterson? Yeah, okay. Motion carried, unopposed. Now go to item 8.1, on page three. 8.1 is Public Toilet Policy and Draft Strategy. Would a councillor like to move a motion? Councillor Summer, thank you. What is your motion?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to move the recommendation as a motion as printed on page three, that the council, one, adopt the public toilet policy, and, two, release the draft public toilet strategy for public exhibition and comment for a period of 28 days, commencing on 13th of January 2020 and concluding on the 10th of February 2020.
Thank you, Councillor Summer. Do I have a second? Councillor Kemokif. Councillor Summer, would you like to speak to the motion?
And thank you, Madam Mayor. It's been a rather long wait for this public toilet policy. It's come up again and again, and I'd like to thank you for your assistance on finally getting it into the agenda. It was marked for review in 2016, and I don't think the documents changed a lot since then, but there were issues with it at the time, and it was sort of parked for a little while, for want of a better word. So, it's a pretty comprehensive document, and it's very timely as well. We have a 10-year capital strategy, and our Kmart toilets are finally being built, which we knew there was a big public need for that. It talks about things like open roof ventilation, having universal safety, universal access, the public surveillance, so that it's not used for improper purposes. Basically, that's probably all quite boring for the public, but it does give us direction moving forward, because it's kind of infrastructure that, while it might be boring, it does create a lot of commentary in the community.
Thank you, Councillor Summer. Councillor Kemokif, would you like to speak to the motion?
Oh, thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm just following on from Councillor Summer. The strategy will focus on appropriate, achievable, and cost-effective ways in which Greater Shepparton City Council public toilets can be greatly improved, so that's a great thing that we need to be doing. The public toilet strategy will also place emphasis on actions to address gaps in accessibility, such as the lack of adult change maternal care facilities, so definitely upgrading some of our policies and some of our standards.
Thank you. Would any councillor like to speak against the motion? Would any councillor like to speak for the motion? Yes, Councillor O'Leary?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, for the opportunity. In the course of doing a little bit of research about toilets, I found out that the 19th of November is the day that we celebrate World Toilet Day. That's a suppository of useless information. So, the other fact that really jumped out at me was the fact that 2.4 billion people, or about one-third of the world's population, lack access to improved sanitation, facilities that hygienically separate the various byproducts, but 1 million people still don't have access to it. And the other interesting thing that it provides is that, it might be a no-brainer, but toilets are crucial for the healthy development of people, and not to mention children. They protect natural resources such as surface water, groundwater, soil, provide safety, security, and dignity for people when they use toilets, so I think this strategy is, can never be understated.
Thank you very much. Would any councillor like to speak to the motion?
To the motion?
To the motion.
Yes, I'd like to speak to the motion. I've just come to grips with the fact that Councillor O'Leary brought up World Toilet Day after he was telling us how busy he's been at work, so I don't think he's been busy enough, but I can, I can relate back, when I first came to council, there was definitely a delay in toilets in town. Since that, and then credit to everyone involved, this council and the one before, there's been continuation of appetite to fulfil the vacancies where the toilets have been lacking, mainly the tower was a great example, the one down there near the transfer station, ah, sorry, the new bus interchange. Currently, the one en route has been renewed in centre of town, which it needs doing. So, we are slowly but surely catching up, and this strategy will help us identify where we need to make our next step. There's plenty of people suggesting where we should be putting them, but it's good to have a policy where we know we're going, and what we know.
Thank you. Would any other councillor like to speak to the motion? No? We will now go to the vote, those in favour? Motion carried, unopposed. We'll now go to item 8.1, Contract 1974, Redevelopment of Tatura Library. It's on page number six. There's a recommendation on page six. Would a councillor like to move a motion?
I'm happy to move that motion, Madam Mayor, that the council accept the tender submitted by BLR Provisional Construction Proprietary Limited 38 Wood Street, Long Gully, for contract number 1974, redevelopment of Tatura Library for the lump sum price of $2,010,790.58, which is inclusive of GST, and we authorised the CEO to sign and seal the contract documents.
Thank you, Councillor Jovanati. Do I have a second?
Second, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Councillor Kemokif?
Thank you.
Councillor Jovanati, would you like to speak to the motion?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. First of all, I'd just like to say that it's a firm from Long Gully, and I was born in Long Gully, so it's a very dear place to my heart. Not that I know the contractor, I don't, nor do I know Wood Street and Long Gully, but anyway, that's beside the point. This is an unusual one for me, Madam Mayor, in so much as I would normally not support a recommendation where the tender price was in excess of another tender that we received. But the information that we have received back from staff is that the second tender is standard of work has, was not of a sufficient standard, and that we have gone for the higher-priced contract price. Staff assure us that they've checked out the bill, they're being BLR Provisional Provincial Construction, and that they do an excellent job and have done quite a bit of work for Bendigo City Council, so on that basis, I'm happy to vote in favour of this motion.
Okay, thank you, Councillor Jovanati. Councillor Okif, would you like to speak to the motion?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is a very exciting project for the people of Tatura. It's gonna be a whole redevelopment, extension of 240 square metres to the library, renovation of the current library facility, and renovation of the existing entrance from Casey Street. Yes, whilst it is a Bendigo-based company, it is worth noting that they have definitely looked at and are using four subcontractors who are located here in Shepparton. So, definitely some works happening within our own workplace here in Shepparton. I think it's also, you know, great to see such a small community, also, the capital budget for this project, they also contributed $100,000 from the Goldwyn Valley Regional Library Corporation themselves, so that capital budget for this project contained that community contribution of $100,000. So, well done to the people of Tatura. I'm looking forward to seeing this project come to fruition. I've had lots of discussions over there, and I know it's a, there's a lot of buzz across the community, so very much looking forward to this project.
Thank you very much, Councillor Okif. Would any councillor like to speak against the motion? Would any councillor like to speak for the motion? Yes, Councillor Summer?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. A follow-on from Councillor Okif, that it is really nice to see projects like this commence. It's some significant funding, and it's being spread around the small towns. For a council that can often be accused of being Shep-centric, this is one of those heartwarming, close-to-Christmas initiatives. We know that we're not hitting the library target, that's come about from our council plan review. Potentially, that's due to the advent of technology, therefore, libraries have evolved, so they're becoming more social hubs for places, for people to have a space to sit and just relax. I know I take my kids to the library as often as I can, so it takes the pressure off parents, and we know a lot of our demographic are young families, and it teaches good habits to the next generation. The, I think we should probably point out that it is over what we anticipated, by about 225,000. That's because the cost that was estimated was back in 2016, and the two tenders that we received were within 5% of each other when it came to cost, so we can reasonably assume that that's the market. I'm looking forward to seeing it, and I do hope that it means we'll start to hit our library targets moving forward.
Thank you, Councillor Summer. Would any councillor like to speak to the motion? Okay, we'll now go to the vote, those in favour? Motion carried, unopposed. Moving on to page number 10, there's a recommendation regarding item 8.3, Advertising of Leases. Would a councillor like to move a motion? Councillor Patterson?
I'll move that motion on page 10 and 11, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Councillor Hazelman, thank you. Councillor Patterson, would you like to speak to the motion?
Ah, yes, thanks, Madam Mayor. This is authorising CEO to advertise leases for buildings that council own that are currently occupied by, by several groups in Shepparton, and I'll read out the groups, I won't necessarily read out the terms of them all, but it's the Shepparton Heritage Centre, the Shepparton Venture Club, the Shepparton Rowing Club, the Shepparton Canoe Club, Shepparton Brass Band, Shepparton Art Museum, World Fuel Services, which is out there, we lease a section there for aircraft to be refuel, and to Goldwyn Valley Academy of Ballet, the Sound Shell and Gardens here, and they'll be advertised, and if there's any persons that object to those leases, we'll have a special council meeting, and they'll be allowed to come along and put their voices forward, but it is advertising the leases, and they're very good organisations, and a lot of those organisations, if not all, play a very important part in the fabric of Greater Shepparton, so I totally support it, and it's a great thing, and we can, we can help these clubs here.
Thank you very much. Councillor Patterson, Councillor Hazelman, would you like to speak to the motion? Would any councillor like to speak against the motion? Would any councillor like to speak for the motion? So, we'll now go to the vote, those in favour? Motion carried, unopposed. Next, we have item 8.4, on page number 14, Resource Recovery Centres, waiving off standard fees for two-by-one-day sessions in January 2020 for residential waste only. Would a councillor like to move a motion? Councillor Summer?
I'd like to move a motion, as printed on page 14, with one small change, please. So, point two, I'd like to remove the words "during the development of the next waste strategy".
Is that an amendment?
No, it's a motion, that's removing the motion.
Motion, okay, all right.
Yeah, as printed, except for those, because that doesn't happen until 2023.
So, you would like to remove that point number?
Just the words.
Just the word.
Keep it as it reads, just take away "during the development of the next waste strategy".
Thank you. Councillor Summer, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Councillor Okif, thank you. Councillor Summer, would you like to speak to the motion?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is a fantastic initiative. We've asked the organisation to consider options for complimentary tip passes, and they've delivered a very sound and feasible first step. They didn't open the floodgates for every day free, which would just leave us in a lot of mess, and they've also left room here for evaluation on whether or not we want to continue. It is just a trial, and it is included in our waste, municipal waste strategy as an action, and it's set there for action in 2019, 20. So, it's still 2019, so it's timely. I remember making sure that we did this, because we sat down with the CEO and made sure that that was in there, so it's in line with our policy, and we're just following through on the resolution of accepting that strategy. So, the public, it's clear the public want this, they've been asking for a long time that we try to make waste disposal more accessible, and I'm just so proud that council is showing leadership here and delivering what the people want. Sometimes it's not easy to get this far, and even the fact we're voting on it today is an, is an achievement. So, we know that 65% of our public, of our people, come from a low demographic environment, a lot of them cannot afford the user pay system that we have now, and there may be a few people out there who dump, but their majority want to do the right thing, and they simply cannot afford it. They don't know what they're going to be charged when they get to the tip, many of them have never been before, and this is a good initiative that could encourage first visits, and we do know that after going once, it's, you're more likely to go again. So, bad habits may remain, we'll be measuring whether or not dumping decreases, but with an understanding of, a basic understanding of psychology is probably gonna take years to correct those bad habits, so it is a first step. It's important for people to sort the rubbish, we have everything on the go, so if this passes tonight, we'll be able to roll it out, get the ball, yeah, get the ball rolling, alert the public to what we're doing, and spread the word. So, they need to sort the rubbish before they get to the tip, and this may be unrealistic for some people who just have rubbish in their backyard that's been piling up for years, but please do your best there. We've seen pics of the Salvation Army stores with rubbish piled up the front, and we know that happens on an ongoing basis, but dumping is worse in December and January, which is why it's targeted for that timeline. So, I don't think it's unreasonable to start the new year giving back to the community, it allows them to have a clean slate moving forward into 2020. It is Christmas, I think it sends a really good message, and if we consider the next agenda item, it's a really cost-effective initiative.
Do you need an extension?
Ah, no, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Okif, would you like to speak to the motion?
Yes, and I agree with Councillor Summer, it's a very good initiative, and I think, you know, looking at some of the conversations we've had with the community in the past few months, I think it's very important that we also bring a highlight to what we are offering already, there are some free opportunities out at the tip already, so the marketing campaign around this is going to be very important, I think it'll actually be a great initiative to get people more informed of what is already available, and I think January being a great holiday period, often it's a good time to spring clean, I know I do that myself, straight after Christmas, we often tend to feel like we wanna just get the house, you know, back in order, so I'm really feeling, you know, for the community, you know, let's really learn and work together a little bit more closely, and I'm really sure that this campaign around this is going to be very, very helpful in giving the community a much better understanding of what we are offering and what is available to them already, and if you ask most people, they don't even know the cost, so this will be a great way of connecting closer to community, which, with a very important service that they should know more about.
Thank you, Councillor Okif. Would any councillor like to speak against the motion?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I will. Not that I'm opposed to a trial, I'm opposed to the way that this is being implemented. My objection is the ad hoc approach, is that arguably will not meet the standard expected by the Waste Management Strategy. There's a short timeframe for implementation, less than desirable for publicity and internal preparations. From here, we're moving into the Christmas, New Year period, when the office will essentially be closed, so the preparation and planning time for this is gonna be impacted. The community will not be adequately informed on the process, as an example, pre-sorting of trailers, and the rush to do this precludes the appropriate level of planning, and in my view, doing it in January is completely the wrong time of year. It's the hottest month of the year, it's school holidays, and many people will be away. We're timing this to occur on a, on a public holiday weekend. Heat will be a deterrent factor, and if you can imagine, as we've had weather the last day and the next couple of days, if it's weather like that, your options, you're gonna go and clean out the shed, or you're gonna watch the tennis and cricket on TV. I think that the heat in January will be a deterrent factor. The lack of planning, by definition, will impact on the measures of any trial, and in this case, will skew the outcomes. Nothing is free, and in this case, will be paid for by the Waste Management Reserve, and I'll hear people say, oh, but what about the rates and so forth? Rates cannot be used to subsidise the waste programme. I also hear people say, other councils do it. A random check of their budgets indicate a higher charge for curbside collection in the order of $80 to $90 more than cogs, and that's a logical outcome. If we do this on a permanent basis and it's cost recovery, every waste assessment will be increased to cover the cost, and that's gonna impact some of the people that this trial allegedly is meant to help, people who are renting, people who are on low incomes. People who are renting are gonna pay this extra charge through their, through their rental fees. It's not specifically targeting products or a resident group, and cynically looking at our transfer station charges, we're having a free day for material that in the main are already free. Happy to have a well-planned trial with performance measures, not this policy on the run.
Thank you, Councillor.
If the motion is defeated, I'll be moving another motion along the lines of, very similar to this, but more impacting in respect of the timing of the trial.
So, that's a foreshadowed motion?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
No, we'll wait and see how it goes.
It's not foreshadowed, you have to do it before we vote.
Okay, so, thank you, Councillor Hazelman. Would any councillor like to speak for the motion? Councillor Sutton?
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to, just say that if this motion is carried, that it's an action that will actually have been initiated by councillors, and it's to determine the level of waste that has been taken to the tip in these two days in January, whether it's hot or cold. I'm think, sure, people will still get out there if they can, know they can take it out there for free, and will provide a level of data that could inform future decisions of council in this space, so I do think it's a good idea, so I'm happy to support it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Sutton. Would any councillor like to speak against the motion? Would any councillor like to speak for the motion? Councillor Jovanati?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Initially, when this concept was mooted at our last council meeting, I was against it, because I couldn't really see the advantages that were going to come from it, and to be perfectly honest, I probably still can't, because I think the cost of the, of these particular two days is going to be reasonably high, as Councillor Hazelman has said, a lot of the rubbish is gonna be dumped, it's probably free anyway, most of the time, so I can't see significant benefit, and I don't necessarily believe that the incidence of dumping of rubbish in the bush is going to reduce because of this, because the people who dump their rubbish in the bush aren't gonna line up and take their rubbish to the tip, but, after saying all that, I must admit that after an informal meeting I had up at the Bowls Club one Saturday afternoon prior to Bowls, the number of people who actually have rang me in relation to my speaking against this concept last month was staggering, I was surprised at the number of people who, who actually said that they want it and they would use it, so for that purpose alone, I'm happy to vote in favour of this motion.
Thank you, Councillor Jovanati. Would any other councillor like to speak to the motion? Councillor Patterson?
Yeah, I'll support the motion, as it is a trial. I have great concerns, like Councillor Hazelman does regarding, it's not free, you know, we've gotta pay for it, and my great concern, and my great interest will be the collection of data from it, I think we're all looking forward to that, and that's the one reason why I am supporting it. My concern is, one of my concerns is that people will go out there with bags full of cans and bottles, and that'll go in hard rubbish collection, and we're paying 32, well, the rate payers are paying $32 a cubic metre to the EPA for that, that would normally have gone into recycled, and no one would be paying anything, and the environment's better off, we're better off, and the rate payers are better off, but at least this, we have the opportunity to find out the results of what is happening, so for that reason, I will support it. I don't believe it'll have an impact on rubbish dumping, and we deal a lot with rubbish dumping through River Connect, which I chair, council initiative, it's probably our biggest issue, people dumping rubbish down along the river, and I don't think it'll have any impact at all on that, because people, some people are just pigs and they won't... and they won't change their habit. And as councillor Jovanati says, they won't line up, they'll just do what they normally do. But, you know, this is an opportunity to find out. That's about the best I can say about it. And let's get the results in and have a look at it. But I'd hate the rate payers out there thinking, we're giving them something, it's their money, but they're paying for it in their levies on their rubbish, not in their rates. It's a rubbish levy. Curbside collection, that we are using that money to pay for this. So there'll be some people probably, when they realise that they're paying for their neighbours to take the rubbish to the tip with their money, then not going to be happy. So let's have a look at the results and then we can make an informed decision.
Thank you. Would any councillor like to speak to the motion? There was none against in the second round, so it's speak to the motion. You would like to? Please go ahead.
I just want to reiterate every single word that councillor Hazelman said. I think it was all valid. Every point he raised. However, I don't think there's an appropriate perfect time for a trial. This is a trial, and that's the key word here. The information we gather from this may not be accurate or a hundred percent due to all the factors that councillor Hazelman mentioned, weather, and other aspects as well. But I think we just have to bite the bullet now, adopt this, try and get, glean the best information we possibly can. And what won't change is the cost to council. All the other things can be varied in respect to people lining up and the heat, but the cost ultimately, we will know what that costs. And that's going to be a big factor moving into the future, whether we continue or not. So it's been talked about for many, many years. So it's about time that I think we actually bit the bullet, which we will hopefully, and adopt this and see what comes out at the end.
Thank you. Would any other councillor like to, councillor Oriswari has not spoken. Would you like to speak to the motion?
Look, thanks, madam mayor. All the comments are valid. And I concur with the commentary by councillor Hazelman. But it's never a reason not to do something because simply it's a matter of the cost that's involved here. And it's questionable what outcomes. But I, like councillor Adam has said, it's taken us a hell of a long way, long time to get here. And I've been on council seven years. And seven years we've waited for some sort of strength of character, if I can put it in those terms, to actually grab the bull by the horns is always reasons to put up the boogeyman of cost. You know, the community wants it. The community wants it. Let's, we're here to represent the community. We are the people that forge the direction of this council. The officers give us the best advice. But ultimately, they might have the last say in terms of what they recommend. But we as councillors, we have the last act because we decide on what direction this council is going to go. And I think that it's about time that this is another example in terms of the parking that we've done as a means of showing this community that we're prepared to listen to what they want and prepared to implement things that they would like to see implemented. Sure, there might be a failure on this, but at least we've done something.
Thank you councillor Oriswari. councillor Summer, do you wish to have your right of reply?
Yes, thank you. I won't bang on too much. But we were told that three weeks is ample time for the rollout. So calling it policy on the run is probably not giving staff much credit when they've said that that is ample time. And January being the hottest month, which may be a deterrent, maybe it is. Hence why we're doing the trial. If it doesn't work in January, perhaps we should rethink that. We might actually make up costs during the year. Yes, there's an outlay. But with more future use, we could potentially get, claw some of that back again. Because the idea behind this is to get those first visits happening so that the repeat visits can happen. The items that are already free, fantastic, bring them down to the tip. We've been encouraging people to bring free items to the tip. And this could actually be an opportunity for them to follow through and take that initiative. So I think it's a, like councillor O'Keefe said, it's about community connection. It's about getting people more informed. We can even educate them about the extortionate EPA fees, which are completely out of our hands. We can educate, we can get the data and move forward with a more effective waste management policy.
Thank you councillor Summer. We'll now go to the vote. Those in favour? Your favour? You're not in favor? Those in favour, so I'll go one more time. Those against?
Division plays, madam mayor.
Those in favour? councillor Sutton, councillor Patterson, councillor Summer, councillor Abdullah, councillor Adam, councillor Jovanati, councillor O'Keefe, and councillor Oriswari. Those against? councillor Hazelman. Motion carried. Thank you. So we'll now go to item eight point five, asset management strategy review on page number eighteen. There's a recommendation. Would a councillor like to move a motion? councillor Patterson?
Yes, I'll move the recommendation on page eighteen. Thank you. The council adopt the asset management strategy.
Thank you. Do I have a second, councillor Oriswari? Thank you. councillor Patterson, would you like to speak to the motion?
Just quickly, from a councillor's perspective, and probably our rate payers, it must look a very boring subject to be talking about. But realistically, we are responsible for one point four billion dollars worth of assets as a council. And it's very important, we have a strategy to oversee those assets and look after them and make sure they're not abused. And this strategy does that. And our staff have done a lot of work on it. And as boring as it may be, it's probably one of the most important things we'll do tonight. So I highly recommend to my fellow councillors.
Thank you. councillor Oriswari, would you like to speak to the motion?
No, thanks, madam mayor.
Thank you. Would any councillor like to speak against the motion? Would any councillor like to speak for the motion? councillor O'Keefe?
Just that it is, has been updated. It's probably an important thing to note that this strategy has been updated and now more current and presents the framework that council now has in place to manage the assets, to ensure they continue to provide their intended service to the community.
Thank you councillor O'Keefe. Would any councillor like to speak to the motion? We'll now go to the vote. All in favour, those in favour? Motion carried, unopposed. Thank you. Page number twenty-one, we have item number eight point six, SAM Stage Two Commitment. Would a councillor like to move a motion?
Yes, madam mayor.
Councillor?
I'll move the recommendation on page twenty-one and twenty-two.
Twenty-two?
Yes.
Thank you councillor O'Den.
Madam mayor, I'll read it out. It's not that long. Recommendation is that the council approve its commitment to stage two works under contract one eight six five, construction of the New Shepparton Art Museum at a cost of two point five million. X J S T, I thought it said two point five billion, sorry. Note that in accordance with the conditions of contract one eight six five, the chief executive will issue the contractor direction to proceed with stage two works prior to twenty December two thousand nineteen. Note the project budget is forty-nine point nine million X J S T, including stages one and two. Note the opportunity to offset the additional funding for stage two against other external funding will be pursued.
Thank you councillor Adam. Do you have a second?
I'd be to second that, madam mayor.
Thank you councillor Jovanati. councillor Adam, would you like to speak to the motion?
Yeah, I'll speak briefly. This is just, it's not a surprise, it's just part of the process. We knew that this was coming up. This project is in stages, obviously. And this is just another stage, another section of works that's going to be done and completed. So yeah, nothing new, all good moving forward. And we're happy to be doing that.
Thank you. councillor Jovanati, would you like to speak to the motion?
Thanks, madam mayor. As councillor Adam has said, this is a second stage to the project that we, that we've already approved. It's for the car parking area, about two and a half million dollars worth of work there. And council staff have been working extremely hard with government departments to try to glean some funding for this project. And we're not far from hearing the outcome of what that may be.
Thank you councillor Jovanati. Would any councillor like to speak against the motion? councillor Summer?
Thank you, madam mayor. This motion is basically committing to stage two, which we put on hold in the attempt to get some more philanthropic funding. We had a target of twelve point-
Quite an order, madam mayor. It's not philanthropic funding.
That's, okay.
Government, oh, well, I thought it was philanthropic to the-
It was, it was not philanthropic.
Twelve point five. And we haven't got even close to that amount. Yes, there was a recent announcement of another million dollars from the Coplas Group, but we don't know what that even looks like yet. The motion kind of makes a mockery of the idea of stages. It was never staged, it was always locked in. Look, I've objected to this the whole way through, so I don't think there's much more to say at all. Everything that I did say at the beginning still stands.
Is that all councillor Summer?
I'm afraid it has to be.
Thank you. Thank you. Would any councillor like to speak for the motion? councillor Oriswari?
I'll just clarify one aspect if I could. The, this effect, correct me if I'm wrong when I say effectively this notice of motion that we're asking to put forward two point seven five million dollars is really money out of our budget for a shortfall, which we were hoping to get additional funding for. It's conditional. That's why it's a stage, isn't it?
I just want to clarify, it's not notice of motion, it's just a motion.
Ah, yeah. But what I'm talking about, I just want to point a clarification in terms of the original notice of motion that was put in the body of the council meeting report tonight, talks about the original notice of motion that was moved by councillor Adam and seconded by you, madam mayor, which talks about the council picking an amount of two point seven five million dollars, which was conditional on funding gain for stage two. And what I'm saying is that we haven't been able to secure that additional funding. So in the interim, the council is funding that shortfall. Is that correct?
I think the best way to look at it is that the contract has a, a date in there that says by the twentieth of December, we need to advise them in relation to proceeding with stage two. That's really what we're asking for. We're continuing to pursue funding sources. So I can't say that council are committing those funds because our intention is to try and get those funds from alternative means. I guess it's fairly obvious that if those endeavours were not successful, council would be up for another two point five million. Yeah.
That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr Peter Harriet?
Yeah, that's fine.
All right. So would any councillor like to speak against the motion? Would any councillor like to speak for the motion? Yes councillor O'Keefe?
I'd probably just like to add, just to give councillor Oriswari a little bit more of, perhaps a bit more opportunity to understand it, that we are, we are definitely pursuing fairly strong opportunities at this point of time. We can't obviously put them down until they're secured. But we certainly have the motions in place. And I think we're all feeling, you know, quite confident with those things that are in place at this point of time. This is really just letting the contractor know that they can continue on to the next stage by timeframe.
Thank you councillor O'Keefe. Would any councillor like to speak to the motion? councillor Patterson?
Yes, madam mayor. We wouldn't be discussing this unless that date of twentieth of December was in the contract. That is a date that we have to, as the CEO just said, we have to notify the builder whether we intend to proceed with that section of the contract. And of course, we do. By the time it is actually required, which could be another several months, we hope to attain that funding. And that is what the idea is. And that's what we've all known all the way through. But that date has come up and we haven't been able to sign the funding over yet, or the funding hadn't been signed over to us. And that is why it's at this meeting, has to be done by the twentieth, and we're authorising it.
Thank you councillor Patterson. Would any councillor like to speak to the motion? Okay. councillor Adam, would you like to use your right of reply?
Yes, thanks, madam mayor. Just to clarify, I think all councillors are fully aware of the way forward in this. Yes, that two point five was not one hundred percent guaranteed. We're all pretty confident we will, we will actually attain that money at some point in the future. But I just want to draw your attention to, originally the stage she was talking about landscaping, guarding, but part of that money is actually going to the building itself, to the calist section. So with a project this size, as we've obviously experienced already, and historically as well, there's always going to be aspects that aren't fully, how can I say, knowledgeable at the beginning. There's a risk with everything we do. And obviously, we've assessed that risk. And I think I'm pretty comfortable that we will attain what we achieve, what we want to achieve at the end of this. So I have no problem in supporting this, of course.
Thank you councillor Adam. We'll now go to the vote. Those in favour? Those against?
Division plays, madam mayor.
Those in favour? councillor Sutton, councillor Patterson, councillor Hazelman, councillor Abdullah, councillor Adam, councillor Jovanati, councillor O'Keefe, and councillor Oriswari. Those against? councillor Summer, thank you. Motion carried.
We might be able to save time by just taping it, playing it.
Sorry?
We might be able to save time at future meetings by just taping the split.
Okay, let's. Okay, councillors, we move on to next recommendation on page number twenty-five. Correct? Nine point one, Greater Shepparton Healthy Food and Drinks Policy. There's a recommendation on page twenty-five. Would a councillor like to move a motion? councillor O'Keefe?
Thank you, madam mayor. I'd like to move the recommendation that the council endorse the healthy food and drink policy and support the implementation of the healthy food and drinks policy.
Thank you. Do I have a second, councillor Summer? Thank you. councillor O'Keefe, would you like to speak to the motion?
Thank you, madam mayor. I actually sit on the committee for the Health and Wellbeing Advisory Committee. And this is all about choice and obviously being aware of the obesity rates across not only our community, but many communities. We did have a briefing and it was very interesting to see the statistics once the fridges were filled up with perhaps more than fifty percent water. I think it's twenty percent, sorry, yeah, twenty percent of the red drink food available, thirty percent amber drinks, which are like your sports drinks, and more than fifty percent of water. So when there's a greater choice of healthier choice, it does seem to be taken up. So as a council, we're looking at our own catering, we're looking at all the foods that we basically have input to, to make more healthy choices, you know, really work with the community. And as part of the community, that's something we'll be doing ongoing to create healthier choices and a healthier community.
Thank you councillor O'Keefe. councillor Summer, would you like to speak to the motion?
Thank you, madam mayor. As a nurse, I teach health promotion most days. And preventative care is really important. We've, we've got written in, this is such a comprehensive and well-thought-out initiative. It's evidence-based, it's based on the Alfred Hospital in Melbourne, their success. So that was about twelve months ago. And they found that customers purchased meals at the same rate, but twenty-six percent more green meals were purchased. So that's great. Fifty-eight point seven percent of our local community are considered either overweight or obese compared to the Victorian average of forty-nine point eight. And when it comes to children, we've got thirty-eight percent of primary school-aged children are obese and overweight in Greater Shepparton. So for us to be leaders in this field, I think is really important. And I hope it leads to other organisations following suit, and especially supermarkets that put so many sugary drinks on special and at eye level and marketed to children. I can't understand how that's legal. There's, the council, cancer councils say that if you drink one six hundred mill bottle of full sugar soft drink per day, you will gain six point five kilos per year. So that's how toxic this sort of food is. And we don't think about it, we just put it in our mouth. So being the kind of food hub that we want to be, the gate, the farm gate, I think there's a lot of opportunity here to enjoy our food and not get those preventable conditions such as heart disease, stroke, type two diabetes, and even some forms of cancer. We know that preventative conditions do put pressure- We know that preventative conditions do put pressure on our hospital system, which was reported in the Shepp News just recently. So it's a lot better to stop people needing those beds than providing the beds, and it needs to be a multidisciplinary approach, and I'm very proud of councillors taking the lead here.
Thank you councillor Summer. Thank you, would any, would any councillor like to speak against the motion? Would any councillor like to speak for the motion? Councillor Jovanati?
I'm probably, perhaps if I'd followed this healthy eating policy for the last 15 years, wouldn't, wouldn't be the size I am now, but I didn't. I do support the policy, and it's great, I think we need to educate our kids to eat properly and to stay off the fizzy stuff, but I've got to take a point with councillor Summer, you can't tell me the greens taste better than a pine sauce.
I haven't lived.
Thank you councillor Jovanati. Would any councillor like to speak to the motion? Councillor Adam?
For the motion, yes. In support of the motion, absolutely. I think everything that councillor Summer said is correct. And councillors should be taking the lead on this, we can't force private enterprise to sell healthier drinks or healthier foods, but we can certainly set an example as a, in our leadership role, and that's what we're doing with this policy, so fully support it.
Thank you councillor Adam. Would any councillor like to speak to the motion? Councillor Patterson?
Just quickly, Madam Mayor, it should be noted that there will still be food that we probably described as councillor Jovanati food available at places at council, but there will be a lot more alternatives, a fresher side, and the water and the non-sugary drinks will be promoted higher. So there is options there, we're not forcing it down people's throat, literally, but it's, options are there, but we're doing exactly what the opposite to what supermarkets do, we're putting the fresh stuff where it's very visible, and you can have a look and you see that before you see the rubbish, and you'll have to get some exercise bending down to get a can of coke out, provided sort of thing, so that's a good thing.
Thank you councillor, thank you councillor Patterson. Would any councillor like to speak to the motion? Okay, we'll now go to the vote. Those in favour? Motion carried, unopposed. Thank you. Now move on to item number nine point two, Community Engagement Policy, there's a recommendation on page thirty-one. Would a councillor like to move a motion?
Madam Mayor, I'm happy to move the motion on page thirty-one, which is that the council approved the release of the draft Community Engagement Policy for public exhibition and consultation for a period of eight weeks, commencing 18th of December and concluding 14th of February 2020.
Thank you councillor Jovanati, do I have a second? Thank you councillor O'Keeffe. Councillor Jovanati, would you like to speak to the motion?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, this is an issue where a lot of the community members probably take some form of disagreement with councillors far as the way we do engage with them from time to time. And the engagement policy that we have on public exhibition is a good document, and I think it covers a lot of the areas that we need to, but I think it's also vitally important that the public take an opportunity to go and read the document and then feed back to us as to what they think that they need as far as the communication between council and the general public, because it seems often that we try various forms of communication with people, whether it be social media or email, letterbox drops, information sessions, but not everybody takes, not everybody takes the opportunity to read and/or attend these sessions that we have. So I think that people need to be able to have a look at the document, provide us with some feedback, and if there are areas that we are falling down on, well, so be it, we can add that into the policy.
Thank you very much councillor Jovanati. Councillor O'Keeffe, would you like to speak to the motion?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, yes, so that availability to have that feedback is until the 14th of February, which is important for the community to know, so they've got until the 14th of Feb 2020 to get that feedback to us. To me, this is one of our most important documents, we need to be connecting to the community, we need to be having a strong communication happening amongst, you know, the community, not always going to please everybody, but on my behalf, I certainly feel that we, you know, this is something that's really important, we need to be listening to what is, the expectation is across the community, how we can do things better is probably a big, a big one, and, you know, learn from some of the things we have learnt by this past 12 months, but also, as, you know, community come to us, tell us what you want, because that's how we know how we can communicate better. Effective community engagement builds relationships between council and the community, so it enables two-way communication, which is critical, and ensures, and ensures community feels valued and listened to. So I think we all agree around the table, it's very important that we can get perhaps a stronger, a successful, stronger thing happening within this space, and we are in discussion on how that should happen and looking at, you know, other opportunities.
Thank you very much councillor O'Keeffe. Would any councillor like to speak against the motion? Would any councillor like to speak for the motion? Councillor Patterson?
I just find it mildly amusing, Madam Mayor, that we've leaked a couple of documents out for a 28-day public consultation during the course of this meeting, and here we go, we go to a community engagement policy, and we're out there for eight weeks all of a sudden, you know? So maybe that's a lot of the reason why we don't get the feedback, we're too short a timeframe, here we've identified we need longer than the 28 days, and I think that could be a very important part of the policy.
Thank you very much. Would any councillor like to speak to the motion? Councillor Summer?
I'd just like to encourage the community to have a say. Traditionally, we've been quite apathetic as a community in terms of coming back to council because of various reasons, but this is a chance to really let us know how you'd like us to connect with you. Perhaps we need to look a bit broader, there were 200 responses to a survey that's already been sent out to the public, which isn't very many when you consider how large our municipality really is. Maybe we need to look at what success looks like in other councils, which of our consultations have gathered the most feedback and why? Because if we just rely on our usual methods, it's quite ironic, because we might not get any community feedback on a community engagement policy. So I do encourage people to have their say, please, because we'll be listening with bated breath.
Thank you councillor Summer. Would any councillor like to speak to the motion? Councillor Hazelman?
Yeah, look, I think rule number one applies here, and that rule is that unless people are directly impacted, they rarely will comment. And when they are impacted and like to comment, if they're adversely impacted, they'll criticise the process rather than the outcome. So in a lot of ways, council is on a hiding to nothing with this sort of a process, but it's a process we need to go through and continuously try to improve on, on each iteration of, of the policy. It's still not going to change people who will complain, because they will say we weren't listening to them, when in fact, we didn't agree with them and moved in a different direction.
Thank you councillor Hazelman. Would any councillor like to speak to the motion? Okay, we'll now go to the vote. Those in favour? Motion carried, unopposed. Thank you. Next is item 10.1 on page number twenty-five, Council Plan 2019 to 2020, Quarter One Progress Report. We have a recommendation on page thirty-five. Would a councillor like to move a motion? Councillor Patterson, what's the motion?
I'd like to move the motion on page thirty-five, Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
The council noting the progress report for the 2017-21 council plan, which provides details in relation to achievements, the measures of success identified in the council plan 2017 to 2021.
Thank you councillor Patterson, do I have a second?
I'm happy to second that, Madam Mayor.
Councillor Jovanati, second? Thank you. Councillor Patterson, would you like to speak to the motion?
Ah, yeah, we're ticking them off as we go, we're basically three-quarters of the way through the plan now, so there's a few items that really need work on, but we're slowly, surely, hopefully, have it all knocked over by the time our term finishes, which is only 10 months away, 11 months away.
Thank you. Councillor Jovanati, would you like to speak to the motion?
Just briefly, Madam Mayor, councillor Patterson was right, and we developed this council plan back three years ago, and I think some of the, the five themes that we determined during this process was that leadership and governance, social, economic, built, and environment. And from those, obviously, there were a number of recommendations that spiralled down from that, and as councillor Patterson said, although I do disagree with his maths, we're, we're four-fifths of the way through the, the actual number, so we've only really got 10 items to knock off in the next nine months, so I think we're tracking very well.
Thank you councillor Jovanati. Would any councillor like to speak against the motion? Would any councillor like to speak for the motion? Okay, we'll now go to the vote. Those in favour? Motion carried, unopposed. Thank you. Next is item 10.2, November 2019 Monthly Financial Report. There's a recommendation on page thirty, thirty-eight. Would a councillor like to move a motion? Thank you councillor Oraswari.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I'd like to move the recommendation on page thirty-eight, that the council receive a note of the November 2019 Monthly Financial Report, and through you, Madam Mayor, invite Mr Titezal to give us an overview?
We need to have a second first?
Yes, I know that. I don't think he's going to be opposed.
Okay, do I have a second, please? Councillor O'Keeffe? All right. Councillor Oraswari, would you now like to speak to the motion?
I'll reaffirm that request through you, Madam Mayor, for Mr Titezal to maybe give us an overview.
Thank you councillor, Mr Titezal, sorry, my apologies.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I'm not sure whether that's a promotion or not. Through you to the councillors, we're now almost six months through the first half of the financial year, and to the end of November, things are tracking pretty much as expected. All the variances are within the projected forecasts that we adopted at the end of the quarter one of this financial year. There are some, there are some favourable and unfavourable, favourable variances year to date in the operating performance, but they're mainly timing variances, and they'll flatten out over the, towards the end of the year. There is one favourable variance that is a bit of a windfall in other revenue, where we've received some additional and unexpected fuel tax rebates from the Australian tax office, taxation office, which is a nice little win for us. In terms of other things to note, the capital works, as at the end of November, was 29% spent, or 21.4 million dollars of the adopted budget. Same time last year, we'd spent 22%, so that's an improvement in performance on our capital works programme, which is great to see. The full year projections remain at around the 73 million dollars as per the adopted budget. Other points to note, sundry debtors for the outstanding for the, up to 30 days and the 30 to 60-day periods have quite high balances as at the end of November. These relate to state and federal funding contributions for the SAM project, and they're expected to be received shortly, so before the end of this calendar year, we think. And rates debtors continue to track well compared to the previous years. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Titezal. Councillor O'Keeffe, would you like to speak to the motion?
No, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Would any councillor like to speak against the motion? Would any councillor like to speak for the motion? We'll now go to the vote. Those in favour? Motion carried, unopposed. Next is item 10.3, Public Interest Disclosure Policy. Would a councillor like to move a motion? There's a recommendation on page forty.
I'd like to move a motion, Madam Mayor, with a slight adjustment.
Sure.
Right, and an addition, which will be point three, write to the relevant minister to request sufficient resources for the local government inspectorate and the independent board-based anti-corruption commission to administer the legislative changes outlined in this report.
Thank you councillor Patterson, do I have a second? Councillor Oraswari, thank you. Councillor Patterson, would you like to speak to the motion?
Yeah, the, the actual report itself without that is pretty well there to address an issue with the change of state government legislation, which will occur on the 1st of January, so therefore we have to have it adopted by the time that comes in, it's to do with whistleblowers mainly, and councillors also having issues with IBAC. The, the issue has been IBAC is already underfunded, I believe, and this will create extra work for them, so there's no use having, giving them more work if they don't have more resources, so that was the intention of point three. But it's very important to have a correct procedure in place for whistleblowers. When things go wrong in an organisation, it's very important that there's, there's steps there at the very first opportunity where people can take those steps. If you don't take those first steps and don't have the policies in place, well, that's when it fester, and it can blow up and do anything. So it's very important we have this right, which the state government's done a bit of work on, changing a few names, et cetera, so I believe the policy is right, but it's important to have the funding, so it's, it might be, you know, exciting stuff, but it is sort of stuff that becomes very involved and have a big impact on a council if it's not there and our staff don't have proper procedures to go to, and more importantly, they know what those procedures are, and it's a part of governments to make sure they know what's got to happen.
Thank you councillor Patterson. Councillor Oraswari, would you like to speak to the motion?
No, thanks, Madam Mayor.
Would, would any councillor like to speak against the motion? Councillor Summer?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I do note the urgency of this needing to be initiated by 2020 in January, it's just that we've really only gone over it in detail this morning, and now we're voting on it today. I don't really think that gives it the robust consideration that it deserves, because this will impact people's lives. That second point, I agree wholeheartedly with councillor Patterson, but it does point to the fact that there may be more complaints that go to IBAC, because we are essentially making it more easy for people to make those complaints, so we're making it more accessible for people. Now, that's great, happy with that, it's just, I think, perhaps some more controls over who's making the decision of whether or not it's a frivolous complaint would be in order, and that can be included in our own policy without impacting on the state requirements. We don't want frivolous complaints snowball, because that, we don't want to see them snowball, which is often the case when a spotlight is put on something. Hopefully, well, I guess all we have to really do is trust that our officers in charge of managing these complaints are well-trained and objective to the best of their abilities, and hopefully, there's no recourse for this, and it remains at exactly the same level as it is now with disclosures, which is almost none.
Thank you councillor Summer. Would any councillor like to speak for the motion? Councillor O'Keeffe?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, just, just a little paragraph here that does point out some consistency with this, as of the 1st of January 2020, as discussed, Protected Disclosure Act 2012 is now being amended to the Public Interest Disclosure Act 2012. This change in term from protected disclosure to public interest disclosure is making Victoria consistent with the rest of Australia, so literally, we're doing what is expected through the state government.
Thank you councillor O'Keeffe. Would any councillor like to speak against the motion? Would any councillor like to speak for the motion? Councillor Patterson, would you like to, to have your right of reply?
Just quickly, we have two options, to adopt it or not to adopt it. If we don't adopt it, come 1st of January, you don't have a policy. It's not council's decision, this is state government legislation, and we've just got to tick it off, it's as simple as that. If we don't tick it off, it's, we don't have a policy, it's not our choice, we don't have the opportunity to write to the state government, say we don't agree with this or anything else. It's either going to be our policy, or we're not going to have one, there's no option. So that's why the urgency, can't put it back to the January meeting, because councillor Hazelman's unavailable.
Thank you councillor Patterson. We'll now go to the vote. Those in favour? Those against? Councillor Summer? Motion carried. Would you? All right, motion carried. Thank you. Next is item number 10.4 on page forty-three, there's a recommendation regarding Shepparton-Chomi 2018-2019 Annual Report. Would a councillor like to move a motion? Councillor Oraswari?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I'd like to move the recommendation- I'd like to move the recommendation contained on page 43 that the council receive a note of the 2018-2019 Shepparton-Chomi Committee Annual Report.
Thank you. Do I have a seconda? Thank you councillor Adam. Councillor Oraswari, would you like to speak to the motion?
Thanks, madam mayor. Look, Shepparton-Chomi, there's an annual report as it's required every year. I've been on the committee since I first became a councillor and I've seen it grow and grow. And with innovative campaigns, great things happen here, which I continue to talk about ad nauseam, but it's really continuing to develop and expand Greater Shepparton's reputation. There's a list of absolutely first class events and campaigns that we continue to generate. And I think the, there's no end to the success story if we continue to push this. I had an opportunity, as did my fellow councillors the other day, to speak with Charles Woolley. Charles has returned back to the area to do a series of follow up advert, sort of small stories in relation to seeing how Greater Shepparton has developed since he was last here. But more importantly, or not more importantly, but as importantly, the people that are the mainstay, committee members who are there and turn up on a regular basis, who are passionate about Greater Shepparton. And not only that, there are also council officers that also regularly put in. And I'm talking about the likes of Fiona Legasic, Matt Ennis Irons, Laura Church, Anthony Nicolarchi, who are there, provide great insight, input, enthusiasm, passion, direction. Those are the things that really determine the success of a committee of this nature. And I take my hat off to them because they do a great job. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Oraswari. Councillor Adam, would you like to speak to the motion?
Well, just to say that I echo every comment that councillor Oraswari just made. But also, we all know that that's been about well over 20 odd years now, the Shepparton-Chomi. We had some issues four or five years ago, but I think the people that are behind the whole committee now, and especially Fiona Legasic, it's evolved, it's transformed, it's now a first rate committee that is achieving all the marks that it's aiming to achieve. And I wish it all the best for the future.
Thank you councillor Adam. Would any councillor like to speak against the motion? Would any councillor like to speak for the motion? Councillor O'Keefe?
Thank you, madam mayor. Just perhaps one thing that hasn't been mentioned is the collaboration that we've had, particularly I've noticed very strongly this last 12 months with the Shepparton Chamber of Commerce, as well as council and Shepparton-Chomi working together. I think we're showing some great strength with the outcomes of those sort of relationships. I think that's something we continue to strive to achieve across the board as an organisation. I think, you know, working collaboratively is always going to get better results. Having Charles Woolley here the other day, it was great to hear some of his feedback and it was very genuine, you know, certainly on the world map as far as the Great Things Happen Here campaign, that's what we need to do, put ourselves out there, put ourselves out on the world stage, not just in our own little corner. So it's, it's great things to see, you know, the Shepparton-Chomi, you know, doing such great work and also working together, you know, with other stakeholders across the community. So well done and congratulations to our council committee members. And yeah, they're doing a great job.
Thank you so much councillor O'Keefe. Would any councillor like to speak to the motion? We'll now go to the vote. Those in favour? Motion carried unopposed. Next is item 10.5, Contracts Awarded Under Delegation and Contracts Advertised But Yet To Be Awarded. There's a recommendation on page number 46. Would a councillor like to move a motion? Councillor O'Keefe?
I'd be happy to move that recommendation, madam mayor, that the council note contracts, number one, contracts awarded under delegation authority by the chief executive officer, number two, contracts awarded under delegated authority by a director, and three requests for tenders advertised but not yet awarded.
Thank you. Do I have a seconda? Councillor Jovanati? You raise your hand first. Okay, thank you. Councillor O'Keefe, would you like to speak to the motion?
Thank you, madam mayor. It's always great to look at what works are actually happening across the organisation, particularly ones that are already happening and the ones that are pending. Some great works coming up with the construction of the change rooms at Kaiala Recreation Reserve. I'm sure they're going to be very happy to see that, that work's done. Construction of floodlighting at Vibrant Reserve is another much needed facility to happen there. Construction of floodlighting also at Princess Park, Nixon Street, Shepparton, so some great works happening and also some tendering still out for work. So it's great to go through all of those and see what's happening.
Thank you councillor O'Keefe. Councillor Jovanati, would you like to speak to the motion?
Yeah, thank you, just briefly, madam mayor. I echo the thoughts of councillor O'Keefe. It's great to see the contracts that are out for tender cover a wide area of the municipality. It's not just Shepparton. People say we're very Shepparton centric, but in actual fact, we're not. We've got the TAT Library, Contract 1974, which probably should have gone over to the other page because we just approved that tonight, so it's immaterial. We've got Marupna. We've got a number of projects there, construction of the Marupna War Memorial Stage One. Another one in Marupna is the construction of landscaping on blocks 1, 2 and 6 of McLendon Street. Again, Marupna refurbishment of the water tower. And these are items that the Marupna community have been chasing for quite some time. So we're actually on the way for that, as well as Mirrigam, the provision of a perimeter fence that they're built, which is good. We're covering a number of towns within the municipality.
Thank you councillor Jovanati. Would anyone, would any councillor like to speak against the motion? Would any councillor like to speak for the motion? We'll now go to the vote. Those in favour? Motion carried unopposed. Next is item 10.6. So item 6, item 10.6, Review of Councillor Representation on Committees. There's a recommendation on page 51 and 52. Mr Peter Harrier, do you want to point out some changes there?
Under the Golden Broken Greenhouse Alliance, I understand councillor Sutton is going to be the representative for the nomination for representative there instead of councillor Summer.
Thank you, noted. So would a councillor like to move a motion? Councillor Oraswari?
Thank you, madam mayor. Thanks for the opportunity. I'd like to move the recommendation contained on pages 51 and 52, and I won't read it out because it is quite lengthy.
With the correction, with the change. Yep. Okay, thank you. And do I have a seconda? Councillor Patterson, thank you. Councillor Oraswari, would you like to speak to the motion?
Thank you, madam mayor. Essentially, it's a yearly revisitation of the council representation on committees. There are some changes, there's some removals and things of that nature. And it's the last change before the run up to the next council. And it reflects the diversity and variety of the number of different committees that council has set on and helped to manage this great community in a direction going forward.
Thank you councillor Oraswari. Councillor Patterson, would you like to speak to the motion?
I think councillor Oraswari covered that very well. Thank you, madam mayor.
Thank you. Would any councillor like to speak against the motion? Would any councillor like to speak for the motion? Councillor Summer?
Just want to point out that it's pretty clear which of us have day jobs. So even though we can't always be there, even though these committees are extremely important, I don't want the fact that people who work full time to be a deterrent for anybody deciding to stand again or stand for the next election. We need people from all sorts of walks of life. And I know personally, in my job, I speak to people every day and learn about them and there's different ways of consulting with the community. So these are very important, but it's not the be all, end all of our councillor roles.
Thank you councillor Summer. Would any councillor like to speak to the motion? Councillor O'Keefe?
Thank you, madam mayor. Just to acknowledge the other committee members on all of those committees, they do great work for our community, a lot of them are volunteers. I myself, as mayor, the last two years, sat on over 12, I think, committees and it's a great connection to community which you share with your fellow councillors. I'm sure you're going to get to experience that. And it's really important that we, you know, truly acknowledge the hard work from these committees because they are the people out on the ground a lot of the time that bring a lot of information back into those committee meetings. It was certainly an extraordinary learning curve for me to be on those committees and something that's certainly given me much value in my councillor role. So thank you to those committee members, Merry Christmas to them all as well. They do some great work.
Thank you councillor O'Keefe. Would any councillor like to speak to the motion? We'll now go to the vote. Those in favour? Motion carried unopposed. Thank you. Now on page number 59, item 11.1, Planning Permit Application 2015-79/A. There's a recommendation on page 59. Would a councillor like to move a motion? Councillor Patterson?
I'll move that, madam mayor, the recommendation on page 59.
Thank you. Do I have a seconda? Thank you councillor Hazelman. Councillor Patterson, would you like to speak to the motion?
Yes, this is regarding a development on the Midland Highway at Burnside. It has turned into a concrete crushing and timber crushing business. There was a permit applied for and this is the refusal. Council have done a lot of work on site and I give credit to them regarding doing noise levels, et cetera. It's not, it's in a rural zone, but it's not just in a rural zone, it's more in a village, surrounded by houses on several sides. The dust was a very big deterrent to the people that lived there. The, the actual noise was well and truly over the EPA standard. Council got a person to go out there with the official recording noise, whatever you call it, and test it. They spent the whole day there testing noise levels and they weren't an acceptable level. I attended the Burnside 120 50 year anniversary of their hall and most of the locals, a lot of the locals spoke to me regarding it and it just, it was very unwelcome in their little community. It just wasn't appropriate, they felt. They had nothing personal against the people that ran it, but it was just very noisy and a lot of dust and not a very good look for the town. I think it started originally off as a, as a garden supply, little business in a corner, then it just grew and changed hands and it got to the stage now, it's not appropriate where it is.
Thank you councillor Patterson. Councillor Hazelman, would you like to speak to the motion?
Thank you, madam mayor. The original permit on this site was issued some four years ago and the permit conditions of that permit prevented the crushing of concrete and mulching of timber. The applicants have come back and saw a variation to that planning permit and on advertisements, some 15 objections were received and those objections largely related to issues around noise and dust. Those issues have been tested extensively and as councillor Patterson said, noise levels tested by an external consultant, an acoustic report, and I think this telling bit concluded that the noise levels of the proposed concrete crushing and mulching of timber would not comply with the recommended noise of industry in regional Victoria and the application should be refused on that basis.
Thank you councillor Hazelman. Would any councillor like to speak against the motion? Would any councillor like to speak for the motion? Okay, we'll now go to the vote. Those in favour? Motion carried unopposed. Okay, next is item 11.2, Procurement of Public Infrastructure Works. There's a recommendation on page 74. Would a councillor like to move a motion? Would a councillor please move a motion? Thank you councillor O'Keefe.
Madam mayor, I'll move the recommendation on page 74 that the council endorsed the Greater Shepparton City Council procurement of public infrastructure works policy.
Thank you. Is there a seconda? Councillor Oraswari, thank you. Councillor O'Keefe, would you like to speak to the motion?
Yeah, just briefly, the purpose of this report, madam mayor, is to explain and seek approval for the procurement of public infrastructure works policy and the policy to guide the construction of public infrastructure work such as drainage and roads that are required in association with a planning approval.
Thank you councillor O'Keefe. Councillor Oraswari, would you like to speak to the motion?
No, thanks, madam mayor.
Thank you. Would any councillor like to speak against the motion? Would any councillor like to speak for the motion?
There's a question. The recommendation is that the council endorse the Greater Shepparton City Council policy. My question is whether instead of endorsed, it should have been adopt.
Is there a difference?
I think adopt is actually a more implemented, actually doing, whereas endorse is, yeah, we're.
It does say seek approval in that first paragraph I did read out, so you're quite accurate there. It does say seek approval for the procurement of public.
Yeah, but if the mover of the motion, the seconda, were happy enough to change the word from endorsed to adopt.
Yep.
Councillor O'Keefe, would you be replacing it with endorse, adopt rather than endorse?
Yes, that the recommendation be that the council adopt the Greater Shepparton City Council procurement of public infrastructure works policy. Thank you.
Okay. So would any, would a councillor like to speak to the motion? All right, we'll now go to the vote. Those in favour? Motion carried unopposed. Next is item 11.3, Draft to Lambour Growth Plan 2019, Authorization for Public Exhibition. There's a recommendation on page 79. Would a councillor like to move a motion?
I'm happy to move that, madam mayor. The recommendation on pages 79 and 80.
Thank you very much councillor Jovanati. Would a councillor like to second? Councillor Patterson, thank you. Councillor Jovanati, would you like to speak to the motion?
Thank you, madam mayor. I think it's vitally important that a little, small township like Talamba does have a growth plan because it's an extremely popular area for people to move to. It's got a great little community there, great school, great community centre. And I think that we need to ensure that we can provide them with additional land to grow their community, which is what this growth plan offers. I would, I would recommend that the Talamba residents grab a copy of this particular document, have a read and again, feedback to us as to any requests that they may have that they think should be included in the growth plan. But I think that the officers have done a great job on this and it covers a lot of the areas that we need to.
Thank you councillor Jovanati. Councillor Patterson, would you like to speak to the motion?
Yes, thanks, madam mayor. But it is a little bit controversial out there, that a lot of the Talamba residents, not looking at any particular Talamba resident, but some like the village feel they've got now and they don't necessarily want their town to get bigger, but that's what this is for, for them to work that out and come and see us and get involved in it. It has the potential to become a very big area. The bypass, and this plan goes for 30 years, God only hope we have it before the 30 years is up. The bypass I'm talking about will make it very accessible from Melbourne and that side of the city as well as coming out from Shepparton, a lot more accessible, so it'll become even more popular. So, you know, I encourage the residents of Talamba, you know, have their say, get their submissions in so we can have a look and see if they want.
Thank you councillor Patterson. Would any councillor like to speak against the motion? Would any councillor like to speak for the motion? Okay, we'll now go to the vote. Those in favour? Motion carried unopposed. Thank you. So next, on page 84, item 12, Reports From Councillors, nil received. Reports From Special and Advisory Committees, nil received. Item 14, Notice of Motion Amendment or Resolution. 14.1, there's a notice of motion, 5/2019, Consultation on Regional Land Use Strategy. Councillor Dini Adam, would you like to say something about your notice of motion?
Yes, thank you, madam mayor. I'd like to move the motion that the Greater Shepparton City Council contact the Shire of Moira and the Shire of Campasby to gauge interest in conducting a review of the Campasby Greater Shepparton Moira Regional Land Use Strategy and also council officers to report back to councillors by the end of February 2020 with the results of that engagement, of the engagement.
Thank you. Do I have a seconda? Councillor Oraswari, thank you. Councillor Adam, would you like to speak to the motion?
Oh, I certainly will. Thank you very much, madam mayor. Look, the Campasby Greater Shepparton and Moira Regional Rural Land Use Strategy was adopted by Greater Shepparton City Council at an ordinary council meeting on 16th of November 2010.
November two thousand and ten. Nearly ten years have passed since this critically important strategy was adopted. I say critically, Madam Mayor, as the guidelines contained within this strategy have dictated how our planning department has interpreted and considered all land use applications in our municipality. I found it rather surprising that such a comprehensive document with such far-reaching consequences would not have included amongst its many recommendations an overall strategy review process and schedule. The only reference to a review in the document is on page one hundred and seventeen, section eleven point two point five, titled Other Matters, and I quote, "There needs to be a monitoring, auditing and review system agreed between the three councils so that information on applications, permits and the basis of decision-making is shared to ensure consistency in application of the strategy, in the event that a proposal is likely to lead to a challenge to the strategy. The three councils need to share information in order to maintain the integrity of the strategy," end quote. Now, this section is in reference to reviewing and sharing with our stakeholder councils the planning decisions borne from this strategy. I can only assume that this is being done, Madam Mayor, but I'm not sure that it actually is. With that in mind, the motion I put for, put before this council tonight, I believe is clear and narrow in its intent. In accordance with good governance practices, I believe all strategies and policies of council should be subject to periodical reviews to determine whether that strategy or policy is reflective of current conditions, and whether adjustments or modifications are required to support the original aims and objectives of the strategy. At almost every OCM meeting, we are either endorsing or adopting any number of strategies and policy reviews on a variety of subjects. I noticed two tonight, actually, Madam Mayor, that we were resolving after a review. But there's too many others to mention, so yet none to date on this particular strategy, which does and will continue to dictate the composition of our rural land use. I want to be clear, in no way, Madam Mayor, does this motion seek to suggest or preempt any potential adjustment to the strategy. The current strategy is quite comprehensive and detailed in its findings and recommendations, yet arguably outdated by the disclaimer of the authors themselves. I refer to page one twenty of the strategy report, section thirteen, titled Limitations of Report, subtitled Other Limitations, end quote. To the best of PB's knowledge, PB being the authors, Parsons Brinkerhoff, I think I pronounced that correctly, the facts and matters described in this report reasonably represent the conditions at the time of printing of the report. However, the passage of time, the manifestation of latent conditions, or the impact of future events...
Councillor Adam, your time has...
Sure it is.
Yeah, is up. Do you want to extend?
Indeed do, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Is anyone okay with the extension? Thank you. You can proceed. You've got three minutes.
I'll finish well within three minutes. However, the passage of time, the manifestation of latent conditions, or the impact of future events, including a change in applicable law, may have resulted in a variation to the conditions. PB will not be liable to update or revise the report, to take into account any events or emergent circumstances, or facts occurring or becoming apparent after the date of the report, end quote. With that statement from the authors in mind, how are we as councillors to reasonably respond, if necessary, to rapid changes if we have no contemporary knowledge of the strategy's progress? The clear intent and purpose of this motion is to determine whether our partner councils on this strategy have interest in conducting a review. If indeed this motion is successful tonight, and the response from our two neighbouring shires is positive to conducting a review, then and only then will further discussions commence as to what this review will look like, when the discussions may commence, and what terms of reference would be appropriate. I believe it would be arrogant and presumptuous of this council to include terms of reference in this motion without input from our partner councils. That said, Madam Mayor, I stand to be corrected, but in my reading of this strategy, I found no direct reference or documented consideration of the impact, whether positive or negative, to the aspirations of generational farming, or the human impact on our smaller rural communities. No doubt these issues were raised during community consultation and were considered, but as I said, no documented reference to that effect. One aspect was made very clear, though, that the current strategy clearly recognises that the millennial drought which occurred over ten years ago was a major consideration in the formulation of the strategy and its subsequent recommendations. I'm really there. As we are all actually acutely aware, sorry, the challenges in climate, technology and regional demographics are rapid and overall unpredictable. If we as a council are ignorant to the degrees of relative success or failure of an endorsed and adopted strategy that I believe would be derelict in our duty as councillors. To support that last comment, Madam Mayor, may I refer to UN councillors to the Local Government Act nineteen eighty-nine, under table provisions, part one A, Local Government Charter, section three D, what is the role of a council? Part two clearly states, the role of a council includes providing leadership by establishing strategic objectives and monitoring their achievements. This motion tonight, Madam Mayor, is a first step towards honouring our commitment to our committee by not only establishing strategic objectives but monitoring their achievements. For this reason, I put this motion forward and encourage all councillors to support it. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Adam. Councillor Oraswari, would you like to speak to the motion?
No. Thank you.
I'm tired, just listen to it. Still coming to grips with it.
Would you like to have some comments?
No, no, thanks, Madam Mayor, no.
No? Okay. Would any councillor like to speak against the motion? Would any councillor like to speak for the motion? Councillor Summer?
So essentially, we're writing a letter or making a phone call to gauge interest in a review, which I think is a responsible direction. Why not? It may go nowhere, or it may turn into something bigger than we think, but congratulations, councillor Adam, for taking the initiative finally on this issue.
Thank you, councillor Summer.
Thank you, councillor Summer. Would any councillor like to speak to the motion?
Yes, Madam Mayor.
Councillor Hazelman?
I can't believe that was only six minutes. Only six minutes.
Under.
Under. Look, I think the general thrust of what councillor Adam is trying to do would be well and truly supported. A strategy that's been in place for nine years would be well worth a review, but I'm not too sure this is the vehicle to achieve what councillor Adam is trying to achieve, in the sense that it could be a phone call from a relatively junior planner to his counterpart of the other council, and we might find that by the end of February, with a couple of those types of phone calls that are going backwards and forwards, and the response of the other two might range from enthusiasm to indifference, I'm not too sure we're going to be further advanced, and that maybe some thought would have been around applying a greater deal of formality to the level of contact.
Thank you, councillor Hazelman. Would any councillor like to speak to the motion? Councillor O'Keeffe?
Thank you, councillor Doolittle. Look, I think we need to be having conversations with our neighbouring shires, I think it's a great thing to have those discussions, and particularly around something as important as the land use strategy. So I think, can't hurt, I'm not quite sure where we're going to go with this, but I think having those conversations, connecting with other municipalities is a positive. And we have that strategy in place, why not have those conversations to have their input, to see what their take is on it.
Thank you, councillor O'Keeffe. Would any councillor like to speak to the motion? Councillor Patterson?
Sorry, Madam Mayor. Yeah, look, I think been nine years, it's worth looking at. I'm with some other councillors, probably we could have done a different way and got a more defined outcome, but what the heck? I don't want to listen to that for six minutes again, I'll pass anything.
You'll never get a thing more.
Thank you. Would any, thank you councillor Patterson for your comments. Would any councillor like to speak to the motion? We'll now go to the vote. Those in favour?
I wish there was somebody who gets a...
Motion carried, unopposed. Thank you. Next is item number fourteen point two, that's a notice of motion again. Notice of motion six slash twenty nineteen, planning permit application twenty eighteen dash two six four. Councillor Dini Adam, would you like to move a motion?
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. This one will be very short. Now, this is going to sound a bit strange, because there'll be another amendment, I think, to this directly after I do this, and I think the mover of the amendment will explain why. The motion is to grant a permit in relation to planning application two oh one eight dash two six four, two lot subdivision at five sixty Archer Road, subject to conditions as per planning department recommendations, with specific reference to the condition that dual access points to current lot be reduced to one access within five years of permit grant. And there's about fifteen pages of conditions, which I won't read, of course. That's on pages, what, eighty-four, eighty-five, eighty-six, eighty-seven, and eighty-eight.
Thank you, councillor Adam. Would any councillor like to second this motion? Councillor Summer?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to move an amendment, if I could, please.
And what's your amendment, councillor Jovanati?
The amendment is to grant a permit in relation to planning permit, application two thousand and eighteen dash two six four, two lot subdivision at five sixty Archer Road, subject to the following conditions as per the planning department recommendations, and the conditions are the same as what is printed on the agenda.
Okay, thank you. Would any councillor like to second this amendment?
I'm happy to second that.
Councillor O'Keeffe, thank you. Councillor Jovanati, would you like to speak to the amendment?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. The purpose of the amendment was due to the fact that we had an administrative error on the original motion. No fault of councillor Adams, it was, happened elsewhere, and what we're doing is making sure that the application, sorry, that the motion reflects what is in the conditions. This particular application has been with council for quite some time now, there's been some difficulties in coming to some agreement in relation to some of the conditions, and the condition, one of the main sticking points was the entry into the property from Archer Road. We do now have a condition relating to that, which I think should be agreeable to the applicant, and it meets council requirements.
Thank you, councillor Jovanati. Councillor O'Keeffe, would you like to speak to the amendment?
Yes, very briefly, it's a fairly long document there, but I think it's probably worth noting, we do have Mr and Mrs O'Callaghan in the gallery tonight, and I'd like to apologise to them for the delay in this, it's been almost three months, so our apologies with that delay.
So councillor Kim O'Keeffe, I would just clarify that we are speaking to the, it's about the amendment, that why this amendment is required, and if it's carried, then we will speak to that amended motion, but right now it's about why we are having this amendment. So do you support, you have seconded that, so you're supporting that? Okay, so would anyone like to, would councillor like to speak against the amendment, the need to have this amendment? No? Would a councillor like to speak for the amendment? Okay, so we'll now go to the vote for the amendment. Those in favour? Thank you, amendment carried, unopposed. So the amended motion is now the motion for consideration, and councillor Jovanati, you have moved it, and we have councillor O'Keeffe as the second of this motion, so I would like to invite councillor Jovanati now to speak to the motion.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, but look, I think I've covered it in my previous discussion. Yeah, I really don't have anything further to add.
Thank you, councillor Jovanati. Councillor O'Keeffe, would you like to speak to the motion?
Thank you, I think I...
No, you can.
But back to saying, there has been a time delay, and I'm really pleased with this resolved tonight, so that the O'Callaghan family can have, you know, this moving forward now and have some closure, and hopefully we can, you know, work with the O'Callagans, you know, moving forward, and as a council, you know, I think it's time we get this resolved, so I'm happy to see some sort of outcome tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor O'Keeffe. Would any councillor like to speak against the motion? Would any councillor like to speak for the motion? Councillor Adam?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just to really narrow this down, the whole issue was, I think ultimately, that the applicant was offered at some point in discussions over the past two years or so, an open-ended timeframe in respect to him removing the two accesses, after, for whatever reason, the applicant, I don't think, accepted that, there were maybe other conditions that he wasn't happy with. Then he was only offered two years by council, so there was a few different alternatives out there at the time. I think the five-year limitation is just a good compromise. The applicant may not be fully happy with that result, but I think it's just, again, I mean, it is a compromise at the end of the day, and I think this is a reasonable way to work through this, so I hope that it doesn't actually get over the line tonight.
Thank you, councillor Adam. Would any councillor like to speak to the motion?
That's fine. I know, I'll just break it.
All right, so we'll now go to the vote. Those in favour? Motion carried, unopposed. So page eighty-eight, item fifteen, documents for signing and sealing, nil received. Page eighty-nine, we have item number sixteen point one, councillors' community interaction and briefing programme, and there is a recommendation on page ninety. Yeah, Mr Peter Harriet, do you want to raise a point?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. In the report, it talks about the welcome dinner of the WRC Board's professional development. You didn't actually attend that, I think that's what we wish to note.
That's right, due to the road red code alert, I did not attend, but it was inadvertently put in this list, so that's the only correction to this list of councillor engagements, so if that could be noted.
I'm still happy to move. We'll be corrected for the minutes.
Thank you. Thank you, councillor Hazelman. Second, thank you. And councillor Hazelman, would you like to speak to the motion?
No, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Councillor Adam, would you like to speak to the motion?
Peter, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Would any councillor like to speak against the motion? Would any councillor like to speak for the motion? Okay, so we'll now go to the vote. Those in favour? Motion carried, unopposed. Thank you. So next is item seventeen, urgent business, not included on the agenda, nil. That brings us to the end of this meeting.
Madam Mayor, just before we finish, can I please thank council staff? This is our last meeting for the year, just like to thank our council staff for the hard work, our CEO, Peter Harriet, councilors, we've had a big year, and the work we do doesn't happen without the support of obviously staff, so thank you, taking on this task, our staff here and Peter Harriet.
Indeed.
Great year, well done.
Thank you so much, thanks. Okay, so that brings us to the end of this meeting, so I declare this meeting close at seven seventeen. Not bad. Thank you.